Okay, good evening, everybody. It's the September eighteenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting of the planning board. I'm Mike Capuano. I'm the chairman of the planning board. With me tonight is our vice chair Amelia Aboff, our clerk Jahan Habib, our members Lynn Richards, Michael McNeely, Luke Schuster. We have a special guest who doesn't have voting rights, but Amelia's Amelia's new addition. Pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of twenty twenty five, this meeting of the planning board is being conducted via remote participation. A video recording of these proceedings is available on the city's website and by emailing planningboard@SomervilleMA.gov. So we have a number of items on our agenda, some of which are ministerial, one of which is real. So we have minutes approval for August twenty first, twenty twenty five. Did anybody have an opportunity to review those? Does anybody have any suggested revisions? Okay, seeing none, the chamber moves to adopt draft meeting minutes of August twenty first and make them the final minutes of the planning board, seconded by Amelia. Steve, can you please call the roll?
Jahan Habib?
Aye.
Lynn Richards?
Aye.
Luke Schuster?
Aye.
Michael McNeely?
Aye.
Amelia Aboff?
Aye.
And Michael Capuano?
Aye, we have meeting minutes. Next up, we have a request for a waiver from the applicant at One Myrtle Street. And my understanding of the applicant themselves is here to make the the request. And it's a it's a request for a requirement of a submission, but it seems to be a fairly ministerial issue. So I'm hoping the applicant can be unmuted, shared, and be able to make the request themselves. And any context that the applicant or staff want to make, well, they want to obviously.
This is Steve Carey. I'm the case planner for this. I see Darren Gladstone is in the audience. I was unable to promote the panelists, but here I can unmute him. And Darren, you should be able to unmute on your end. And you can just, I know the planning board, you guys have received the waiver requests kind of packet of materials that I included into your packet. But Darren, if there's anything you wanna you wanna add or just just restate your your request for materials to be waived, that'd be great.
Yeah, I believe I'm muted now, correct?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, not really. I mean, it's just looking for.
Before you proceed, I'm sorry, but for the purpose of the record, could you please just introduce yourself and give your name and address for the record?
Darren Gladstone, Clearview Sunroom, ten thirty seven K F Highway, Barrington, New Hampshire.
Okay.
Yeah, the the submittal pretty much covers everything. We're just basically looking to remove a six by six deck and put a six by six mud rim sunroom on the back of the home.
Okay, um, this is a waiver request, so it's not a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yep. So so I'm wondering if Steve, if you have any comments that you'd like to add as the as case planner on this waiver request?
Sure, sure. There's three materials that are typically included in a site plan approval application that they're requesting a waiver from. One being the building elevations, second being building sections. Both of these are, you know, typically included for, you know, construction of a either a new building or a much more significant building component. But in this case, given the scope of the project staffs in support of of waiving this, the planning board feels that one of those items, you know, feels necessary to be able to understand sort of the the scope of what's going on. And then the third item is the zoning compliance table. Again, this is something that would be, it's it's helpful particularly for ISD to determine the zoning compliance of a new building or a building component. I did review this with ISD just earlier today, just to confirm that they were, you know, in support of this waiver as well. You know, the the addition, which is sort of a sunroom at the back, really doesn't change anything about the the main massing with regards to zoning compliance. It doesn't really change any of the setbacks. So again, staff is in support of of leaving that material request as well.
Thanks, Steve. Does anybody have any comments or questions of Steve or the applicant? Or this waiver request? Seeing none, the chair moves to, I guess, accept the request or approve the request for a waiver. Seconded by Amelia. Steve, clear the roll call, please.
Jahan Habib?
Aye.
Lynn Richards? Oh, Lynn, I think you're muted.
Aye.
Luke Schuster?
Aye.
Michael McNeely?
Aye.
Amelia Aboff?
Aye.
And Michael Capuano?
Right. Okay, congratulations. Good luck with the summer.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, of course. Now, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna exercise my discretion to take items out of order. The next one I think we have is three seventy nine Somerville. I know the the applicant and and councillor on. I believe it's a request for continuance.
Yep, promoting Attorney Anne Vigorito, and they have submitted a written request for continuance, but I'll let Attorney Vigorito add anything she'd like to.
Attorney Anne Vigorito, four twenty four Broadway, Somerville. I was just gonna say, yes, we're working with the planning staff. So hopefully, at the next planning board in two weeks, we'll be here to review everything with you.
In that case, the chamber continued the agenda item to the second, seconded by Amelia. Steve, roll call.
Jahan Habib?
Aye.
Lynn Richards?
Aye.
Luke Schuster?
Aye.
Michael McNeely?
Aye.
Amelia Aboff?
Aye.
And Michael Capuano?
Aye. Thank you. See you in a couple of weeks. Okay, next up, I'm I'm gonna take the the DCR mat dot then last, because I don't believe, let me know if there's a representative on that particular application in the in the audience. I don't think there is.
This is Steve Carey. Though I also don't see anyone in the audience from my party.
Perfect. Well, let's take up fifty nine Bow Street, please. Hello?
Oh, Chair Capuano, Mr. Chair, he's from Michael McNeely.
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw I saw a hand from Michael and a hand from Amelia. Sorry.
Yeah, so I just wanted to disclose that I was absent from the September fourth planning board meeting. I watched the video and submitted the appropriate affidavit.
Okay. And Amelia?
Same, I was absent from the meeting where this was previously discussed, but I've watched the video and submitted the affidavit. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, let's let's move forward with the the review of this application.
Good evening, Attorney Anne Vigorito, on behalf of the applicant for fifty nine Bow Street. I am joined this evening by the architect Tanya Carrier from Calca Design. And we also have the applicant, Alan Sassoon is here as the manager of the Fifty Nine Bow Street LLC. At the, we did present at the last meeting, and I believe Chairman Capuano, you left the record open for any further comments. So at this time, if you would like, you know, I can have Tanya do a quick recap or, you know, whatever the pleasure of the board would be.
So I know one of the questions that we had on this application related to the sufficiency of of the materials submitted for for the generator. And so, yeah, if if you wanna make a presentation, I know the planning board has received the additional information. So if you if you and your team want to weigh in on on that and anything else, please do so. And obviously, the case planner as well.
Yes, I do believe we uploaded the official letter from EverSource. I think we, you know, it was kind of unofficially, you know, presented to the board at the last meeting. I think Tanya has that on a slide, and I would just ask if Tanya, actually, I think she needs to be promoted in order for her to do so.
Steve Carey, I just promoted Tanya to panelist.
Good evening, everyone. Tanya Carrier from Calca Design, architect on the project. Yeah, so we did present that at the last hearing. It's not much to look at, but the transformer was approved by EverSource for the location we presented, and we submitted it to the planning staff so that they could review it in further detail, and they updated their staff report.
And 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 the location is is underground, right? Is that is that?
Correct, it would be under the sidewalk on Bow Street Place.
Okay, because I do recall there was a concern by an abutter as to whether it was going to be above ground and their their use in the in the space directly proximate to it. And so we, just to catch everybody up and anybody who might be in the audience, we wanted to make sure that this was in fact going to be not obtrusive. That sounds like that's the answer that we got from EverSource, so.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody on the board have any comments or questions or points of discussion for the applicant or of staff, or if staff wants to raise anything that we haven't talked about already? Going once, twice, scanning my colleagues. Okay, I think it's certainly, you know, fine amendment. Thank you, guys, for working through with with staff and with us and making sure that we can move this in the direction that we anticipated it was gonna go into. You know, with with EverSource, and I think and I hope that this alleviates the concerns that were raised by the abutter. And I'm happy to move forward with a vote on this. I think we need, actually, two votes. So, following public testimony, review of the submitted materials and deliberation of the required considerations outlined by the ordinance, I move to approve with the conditions outlined in the staff memorandum, the major amendment to a previously granted site plan approval, which was P and Z twenty one dash zero one seven, to develop a general building in the Midrise Five District with the seconded by Amelia. Steve, roll call, please.
Sorry, I was muted. Jahan Habib?
Aye.
Lynn Richards?
Aye.
Luke Schuster?
Aye.
Michael McNeely?
Aye.
Amelia Aboff?
Aye.
And Michael Capuano?
Aye. Okay, following public testimony, review of the submitted materials and deliberation of the required considerations outlined by the ordinance, I move to approve with the conditions outlined in the staff memorandum, the major amendment to a previously granted special permit, P and Z twenty one dash zero one seven, to establish a household living use in the Midrise Five District, seconded by Amelia. Steve?
Jahan Habib?
Aye.
Lynn Richards?
Aye.
Luke Schuster?
Aye.
Michael McNeely?
Aye.
Amelia Aboff?
Aye.
And Michael Capuano?
Aye. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you so much, Chairman Capuano, members of the board, and congratulations to Amelia. I think we may have bored the baby to sleep tonight because he hasn't, he or she has not made a peep. Good luck.
Amelia, maybe maybe some of the EverSource materials can help with nap time?
I do think that watching the recording of the September fourth meeting helped on a previous previous occasion, so.
Yeah, if you wanna have a poor night's sleep, watch something where something controversial happens and I get to go.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, have a good night. That's everything I believe that's on the planning board's agenda outside of a request by by staff to make the planning board aware of a meeting. So Steve, go for it.
Sure, just that be, we completed a zoning study of what we're calling Central Broadway Corridor, which is between Ball Square and Magoon Square. And we presented that study actually back in in March to the public, but the night we chose it corresponded with this emergency rally that was happening at Tufts University. So a lot of people we think might have attended that went to that instead, along with the city councillor. So anyway, that that initial, that public presentation we did back in the spring didn't get reached many community members as we would have liked. So we're holding another one next week on Tuesday, and just wanted to make sure the planning board was aware, you know, you're you're welcome to attend if you'd like to. I think that it, you know, it's it's possible we'll see some sort of upzoning zoning map amendment coming. There's a number of city councillors who are interested in that, and I think that the zoning study may may inform that. So anyway, just just added it to your to your packet just to, you know, make sure there's some visibility for it and figure I can use the board administration item just as a excuse to to do that.
I I realize we're actually missing one item on the agenda, which is the Cross Seven Park.
Yeah, yeah, I figure we can we can hop to that next, but I did see Amelia.
Yeah, sorry.
To you, Mr. Chair, is it the intention? Is it is it staff's intention or your intention for us to have a discussion of the Broadway corridor study materials, like at an upcoming meeting? Or will there be of for a planning board discussion of that, assuming it's a plan that will eventually come before us for approval?
Well, it actually, I.
Or it won't because it'll, sorry, please.
Yeah, it's technically not not a plan for adoption. It's it's just a just a study. Essentially, it was based on public engagement. Really, what what started that study, this is additional background I should have given, is that a number of parcels along the north side of Broadway actually split with Medford. And it's created this sort of permitting headache for quite a while. So that was sort of the impetus, was I think a grant that was from the state that was for both cities to kind of work together, to work together, to try to figure out if there's a way to harmonize zoning between the two sides, look at Medfords and look at Somerville's. And we sort of used that as an opportunity to hold back, this was back in twenty twenty four now, but hold some public engagement events to really, really trying to get a handle on what level of density people were comfortable with along that stretch and sort of what, you know, land uses might be desired or might be missing. So so, yeah, so the resulting document is what we refer to as a study, it's sort of information for the public and to inform future planning initiatives, not a not a plan to be adopted by the planning board. That being said, I mean, it, you know, it's, if you guys, if you, you know, wanna add it as an official agenda item, once you guys, you know, if you do review the study and wanna have a discussion about it as a planning board, obviously, it's, you know, you're welcome to do that.
Steve, is the meeting, I remember when we were dealing with the Woody's, Lica's application a few weeks ago, one of the planners from Medford was in attendance talking about their comprehensive plan and things like that. Do you anticipate that this meeting is going to address some of the issues that that Medford is looking at? And I don't know where they are in their planning.
I hope so. I hope so. Yeah, just about a month or so ago, I believe they put up a proposed proposed zoning map. I don't know where they're at in terms of adoption. But we have reached out to the planning director for Medford, and we're hoping she'll be in attendance at this meeting. And, yeah, we would love if she was there and wanted to just say a few words about where Medford's at in the process.
Okay, great. Yeah, Jahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I just wanted to thank Steve for bringing this up, even if the planning board doesn't take up this matter in future discussions. I think, Steve, if it's possible and feasible, I would just say that as part of our other discussion or other board matters, if you could just share with us these types of, whether it's a zoning study or some other matter of relevance, you know, I think that it might be just helpful for the planning board members to at least have the option to to go. And this is a great great forum to do so. So thank you for doing this, and thank you, Mr. Chair, as well.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I'm happy to sort of, you know, and I send out those packets, use, yeah, use this board administration issues item as just a as basically a forum for, you know, any kind of, you know, community engagement event, ongoing ongoing study, that sort of thing.
Cross Seven Park Bridge thing. Steve, can you, I I know we had a couple of questions at the last meeting from from me, from Lynn, from a number of other people as to what exactly our role is here at this point for some of these applications. This is something that we don't see very often. In fact, I, aside from the, you know, beach watershed thing that we had a few weeks ago, this is the first one that I remember doing. I've been on the board for for a little while, so kind of trying to figure out what is what is our role as it relates to these? I don't know if we're gonna get any more of these, if this more frequent, that this just happens to be coincidental.
Sure. So as part of the chapter ninety one application process, the planning board in the municipality that, you know, is that that waterway is in, does have the opportunity to submit a written recommendation. The form that I had forwarded around as part of the the packet is really just a, it's just just a form to basically acknowledge that the planning board did receive those materials. There was some confusion over when the, you know, when our division received those materials. So the, they had, they had apparently mailed it to our office over the summer. We're, we've had AC issues in City Hall all summer. We haven't been in that often. I, we didn't, hadn't received those materials. Obviously, we would have forwarded along to you guys as soon as we had, but we didn't, we didn't receive them for whatever reason. So we didn't become aware of of that chapter ninety one application until, you know, I think it was like late August. So that's why we got it on the September fourth agenda. So there is some, I think, still not clarity on on when the clock has started for a review period, because that would start when the planning board receives those materials. And I'm, I'm, I basically asked the law department for their their input on it. Their take was that it could be kind of a tricky question, but really what it comes down to is if a written recommendation is something that the planning board wants to submit in accordance with, you know, Code of Massachusetts regulations, that's something that can be submitted, and we can, you know, make it, get a sort of legal opinion on on when that forty day, five day period would begin. I mean, my understanding would be that it would start when we actually sign that form acknowledging receipt of the materials. That would that would make sense to me. We don't have a clear answer on that yet, but I guess I would just leave it at, it's really, it's at the board's discretion to decide if you if you do wanna submit a a recommend recommendation relative to that pedestrian bridge.
Good. Um, thank you. I mean, I love I love having an answer. We don't really have the answer that I think we wanted, but at the same time, the question is, do, based on what this is and kind of what the role of the planning board is as it relates to this this project, as one member, I I don't need to make a recommendation to DCR or Mastod on the sufficiency of their bridge. Yeah, I don't know. Make it a nice bridge. I'm sure they're gonna comply with all of the requirements that they're required to comply with to to make it a nice bridge that I think everybody wants generally. So that's that's kind of where I'm on on this. I'm happy to vote to generally approve the the application package. Yeah, Michael?
I think Lynn was first, if you wanna give her.
I didn't, I didn't see Lynn's, but, yep, Lynn.
Um, so, you know, I'm a cyclist, and so I I I'm over pedestrian bridges all the time in the Boston area. And so I can take you on a tour of pedestrian bridges that one hundred percent meet all the requirements of Mast DOT, and they're terrible. And so paying attention to the design of the bridge and how it meets the Somerville side, I actually think is the role of the committee. Think of how much time we spend talking about a building and how the building is going to look, how we're gonna frame the rooftop or or the windows, because we all intuitively know that a building is going to be there for a while, and how it how its face greets the street and greets the the public realm makes a makes a big difference. The same can be said for a bridge. So I really appreciated Steve's research on ninety one. I also did a little bit of research as well on it, and I do think that we have the 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 wherewithal, like we have the authority, if we wanted to talk a little bit about the design. There was one piece that I found kind of frustrating is that the first guy from Tetra Tech saying, I've been working on this for eight years, and we're at twenty percent design. Now, in my world in urban design, when an engineer says twenty percent design, that is twenty percent design with cost elements. But they have it all sketched out of what they want it to be, and now they're going through the 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 very fine kind of blueprint. So I was a little disappointed that we didn't get more information on what the bridge was going to look like as it grounds into Somerville. I mean, I I understand your position, Michael, and and pedestrian bridge, good. But we wanna have a beautiful pedestrian bridge. This is, this is a once in a, this this is a unique opportunity for for Somerville and for this bridge, and shouldn't we, are are we the only local voice here that will? I mean, yes, there's public comment, and as citizens, we can certainly engage. But, you know, as an institution, we might be able to influence, it's like, let's have a beautiful bridge, just not a nice bridge, but a beautiful bridge. So that's that's what I've been thinking about. This isn't a hill I'm gonna die on, but I do feel that we should look at the design in the same way that we look at the design of all the buildings and the developments that that we assess. Thank you.
I I appreciate that. I don't know if we have the design that we need or if we can get one in the timetable that we would need to make a recommendation. But but I but I appreciate the, you know, the sentiment and the concern. I, you know, if if it was really our opportunity to to weigh in on the, you know, the way the bridge looks, yeah, I'm I'm happy to, I'm happy to do that. I don't know if we have that material. And I don't know if we will have that material by the time we, you know. I'm perfectly happy to have a zip line going across the, that's just me. Michael? I saw Michael and then Amelia.
As another member, I also would give a positive vote for the zip line, so just for future contention. So I I also would like to echo a couple of thoughts that Lynn had in there as well and highlight that Stephen was kind enough to point us to a little bit of language also in the three ten C M R, I believe specifically section nine dot one three subsection five. And I'm sure my colleagues have also probably looked at this because we're all code nerds. In there, you know, it does talk a little bit about our just general acknowledgement of materials. And I think, Mr. Chair, you've already kind of set a certain tone that that might be the best thing for us to do, and I wouldn't be opposed to that, specifically because it does highlight two other things that we could be weighing in on specifically if we were to write a letter of recommendation, and they were, one, whether or not this would be detrimental to public rights in tidlands and great ponds. And I know I, as one board member, did not see sufficient materials to help me feel one way or the other on that. And at the end of the day, I probably would hope that the city would be able to provide some resources to help us make that assessment. The second one looks a little bit more like it's in our standard purview, somewhere where I'd feel a little more comfortable waiting in, for lack of intention on pun there. And it specifically says, serves a proper public purpose, except in the case of water-dependent use projects entirely on private tidlands, right? And so that's where we get into this use as a pedestrian and biking. And, you know, I, as one member and as one member of the public here, have very much hoped to see that particular connection improve as a pedestrian user. Like, it is not always great to cross that waterway with the options that we have available today. So I know I would love the opportunity to be able to put our weight and support behind this, but I think to remember Richard's point, like, Like, I think we need a little bit more material to do that, and, you know, if if we don't feel like we have sufficient time to do that, and the applicant doesn't desire our support. Um, and input, then, you know, perhaps we just fall back to uh acknowledging a receipt, but I know as one member. I would love to have the opportunity to to put some weight behind it.
And. Then Amelia, did you also have your hand raised, I don't see the.
I do, thank you, um, I've got a tiny hand raised also, um.
That's that, that's the most important one.
Um. I can maybe come down a little bit in the middle on some of the points that Lynn and Michael made, um. My perspective is, as one member, is that. I would not go to bat about the aesthetics of the bridge, but I would happily go to bat about the functionality of the connectivity of the bridge. Um, so, I, you know, whether, I I don't think we're gonna talk DCR into choosing a better aesthetic design personally, but I think we might be able to choose the, to to nudge them into. Some kind of more optimal, you know, actual connectivity, I'm not sure, but that's my. Baseline assumption about sort of where the parameters of DCR's flexibility will lie. Um, and then second, if we're not going to have the opportunity to review. Additional materials, one sort of middle path that I wonder if satisfies any of the intentionality here. Might be to, and you know me, I always go back to Summer Vision, right, as our sort of the the baseline document for the board's role. Um, to go through Summer Vision and call out the, you know, three to nine. Principles of Summer Vision that are most relevant to this, and sort of issue a letter back to DCR saying. We understand design is at this state, and here are the. Um, components of our strategic plan as a community that we hope this will. Respond to or be in support of, or, you know, in in the absence of sufficient information, I, that that would be my thought on how we might. Put um a little bit more of Somerville's priorities out into DCR's sphere of consideration. So, I'm just spitballing, but. Thank you.
Um, yeah. I'm I'm trying to figure out. What, if any, action we, Steve, are we on a time clock to do this for the chapter ninety one issue?
And that's.
If 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 we're a year eight and twenty percent. You know, we can probably make a recommendation sometime in twenty forty five, and they might have, you know. You know, some, 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 you know, pylons pictured.
Yeah, I I again, I wish I had a clear answer, guys, that it, you know, it's laid out as a forty five day uh period, or thirty days to hold a public hearing, if you want to do that. And then fifteen additional days after that hearing to issue recommendation, but really forty five days, and I wish I could tell you more concretely that it's that clock has started or not. Um, but I think what you could do is, you know, you could. Vote to acknowledge receipt of materials, and then also in the motion, put in something like, um, and and request additional materials to, you know. Inform any, any written recommendation.
That that's a good idea, and and concurrent with. That vote, um. See if we can get an opinion from. The Solicitor's Office as to when that clock expires, for us to be able to do that, if we can get it in by the ten two meeting or something.
Sure, I'd I'd be glad to follow up with uh the law department.
Okay, so is it, I I I think we can take a vote tonight to acknowledge materials and request the opportunity to. Um, receive additional, you know, renderings or whatever they might be, um. In conjunction with uh an opinion on whether we can. Weigh in a little bit more deeply on ten two, um. Does that make sense to people, or am I off off the off the reservation now? Okay, okay, um, in that case, I'm, I move to um acknowledge receipt of the materials. And also see if we might be able to get additional materials in such that we can make a timely. Recommendation um by our ten two meeting, um, on the. On on any additional materials that we might be able to get from from DCR and Mastod.
Can, can, Michael, I'm wondering if we can't be a little bit more specific, I really liked Michael's comment about marsh grasses, so. To understand better about how the Somerville side of the bridge connects to the land and where the. Like, I I think when we ask for additional materials just to narrow it down, and I, again, they have conceptual drawings, I'm sure of it. But to share, like, I don't need to understand the pylons and the river, I'm sure that's up to code, but I wanna see how the bridge. Connects to the park, and what's the lighting, what's the seating? People are gonna be fishing off the bridge, are there going to be little bump outs along the bridge for, so. Again, to understand more of the conceptual design of it, so we can better. Um, we can better assess that the bridge is meeting the goals of connectivity and vibrancy ala um Amelia's comments.
Sounds good, Steve, let's modify that recommendation, uh, or that request to to mirror what Lynn just said.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, and I incorporate that into the motion, seconded by Amelia. Steve, we have a roll call.
Jahan Habib.
Hi.
Lynn Richards.
Aye.
Luke Schuster.
Hi.
Michael McNeely.
Hi.
Amelia Abah.
Aye.
And Michael Capalano.
Aye. Okay. See what happens by October. I don't think there's anything else on the agenda tonight, is there? Am I missing anything?
Nope, I believe you got it all, I mean, obviously, there's that, you know, board administration uh item that is kind of open if anyone wants to bring anything up, but.
Yeah. It's just a more formulaic way of my usual question of if anybody has anything they would like to add for the good of the meeting. Seeing none, uh, at six forty, Steve, we should have made a bet, we did not, um. The chair moves to adjourn, seconded by Amelia, we can have a roll call.
Jahan Habib.
Hi.
Lynn Richards.
Hi.
Luke Schuster.
Hi.
Michael McNeely.
Hi.
Amelia Abah.
Aye.
And Michael Capalano.
I see you all on ten two. And I hope we have. An additional guest.
I know.
Made the whole meeting.
I I did, beautiful, wonderful.
Better behave behind this.
Alright, bye all.
Thank you.
See you all.
Take care, have a great day.